All right, Denise, can you hear me? She's muted.
I can hear you. Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to call the Hinkley Township January 18, 2022 regular meeting to order. Roll, please. Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Here, and we will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good, thank you. Those that are attending virtually, I can do my best to navigate being the proctor as well as running the meeting, so bear with me. Views are not what they typically are on my end, but hopefully they are on your end. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 11, 2022 meeting minutes, special meeting minutes?
You can do them all together, Melissa. What else?
There's three of them there.
Okay, so we'll do motion to approve the 1 for 2022 organizational meeting, the 1 for 2022 trustee regular meeting, and the 1 11 2022 special meeting. Second.
Second invited by Astral. Yeah, can we do a roll call?
Sure.
Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes, thank you.
You guys can sign those later.
Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna hand it right over to Police Chief Setner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everyone?
Very good, how are you?
Good. I'm a little tired, a little worn out. As you all know, I believe I sent you my new address, Martha, to update your records.
Got it.
We moved over the weekend. Moving is absolutely horrible. I hope that, you know, you never have to go through it to this extent ever again.
You just lived in that, haven't you?
We're getting there, so.
At least it was over the weekend.
Well, we were very lucky that we got everything done. The big stuff's Sunday. Now it's just a matter of going through stuff and filling the dumpsters.
Thank you for being here amongst all.
I appreciate. I'm a little, just a little wore out, but that's okay. So I've got a number of items. I'll get right to it. First up, motion to approve repairs to the police department generators through W.W. Williams for a cost of $1,012.46. These repairs include replacing the engine block, heater, and battery and returning the system to full operation.
So moved.
Second.
And we do, um, sure. Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Thank you. My next item up, motion to approve the purchase of ammunition through Kessler's Police Supply at a cost of $3,951.60. Delivery is 12 to 18 months out from time of order. This is under state bid pricing that expires at the end of February. This is essentially just duplicating what I ordered 18 months ago or so, just to keep our ammunition supply up. And with the extended delivery times, actually, the last of our order, or the last of our last order just arrived, and that's been two years ago almost.
Wow.
So I'd like to stay on top of that. We do tend, you know, we are trying to have a range day once every quarter, so that's that request.
I am not seeing that in front of me. Is it in our packets or no?
Should be. I'm sorry, there may not be a copy of last, the last bid in your packets. I apologize for that. I can certainly send that over.
This is the same order as you guys have approved in the past, so.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Hey, Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, as I, with the exception of Jack, I think everyone's aware that Sergeant Singleton is assigned to the Medina County SWAT team as a team member. Motion to approve the purchase of night vision equipment for him and his assignment to the county SWAT team at a cost of $4,305. The original cost was at $5,975. The Sheriff Price was able to obtain the additional infrared lasers for the entire team, which resulted in a reduction of $1,670 from the original request.
Just name the vendor, please. Strategic Dark Solutions?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
No move. Second. Seconded by Astral.
Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
You guys can do one motion for these next three trainings.
For the training, okay. First request is for Patrolman Jake Etta to attend the Read Technique of Investigative Interview and Advanced Interrogation to be held March 8 through 11 of this year in Cleveland, Ohio, at a cost of $770. All of my officers go to this class, so he would be the last at this point. Training request to enter into a 2022 training agreement with Engage Virtual Range at a cost of, that this is gonna change slightly, $3,525 is included in your packet is the updated quote. Each officer will have two two-hour training sessions during the year.
Do you want to add the next one?
And then the last is for me to attend the 2022 Annual Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police Conference in Columbus, Ohio, May 8 through the 10th of this year at a total cost of $880. That includes the conference room meals and the, my 2022 annual association dues.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Astral. Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Uh, Melissa?
Yes.
Thank you. So last item is more of a point of information. I have subscribed to the Public Records Briefing that is published by Mark Weaver. It's a biweekly newsletter that is geared towards state and local government handling of public records requests. I forwarded you your first newsletter this morning. It, Mark Weaver is probably the foremost expert on public records in the state of Ohio. Your Sunshine books that you've seen over the years, he authored those when he was with the Attorney General's Office many years ago. There's, he is absolutely, if you've got a question on public records, he's the guy to ask. He is absolutely phenomenal.
No, it was a very good.
It was $60. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, the email this morning I sent off to both the zoning commission and the BZA, and, you know, asked them to forward it to the chairs.
I'm sure we'll see some good information come through those newsletters every couple of weeks, so.
Very informational. Thank you for that.
So.
Anything else for Police Chief Setner? How about from the audience? Does the audience have any questions for Police Chief Setner? He is going to head out if there are no questions for him. No questions, Chief?
Thank you. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for using your.
Of course. Thank you for being here. Good luck.
Thanks.
Chief Grossenbach?
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
First is request resolution into the one-year month-to-month contract with ESO Scheduling, our scheduling software at a rate of $89 per month, effective immediately. I know there was some question on what do we pay in December through ESO? That is our emergency reporting software. ESO is kind of buying up a whole bunch of different software firms, but this is how we, all our members sign up for their monthly shifts.
So moved. Moved by Astral.
Second.
Second, perfect. Seconded by Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Thank you. Request appropriations for $3,611.25 for our cost allocations from Medina County All Hazards Team. This is, everybody in the county pays into this. It's based on population, but this covers any responses from the All Haz, the High Angle Rescue Confined Space, Structural Collapse Confined Space, and the Medina County All Hazards Team. And we do have a couple of members that are part of this, this group. And they, the equipment spread out through the county, so that if we do need them, and most time we've used them is for rope rescues throughout the years. We do have members that are trained, but it is highly specialized training, so like to pay that.
So moved. Moved by Astral.
Second.
Seconded by Swedick. Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Next is request appropriations for $330 to replace a broken door, garage door cord reel, and adjust the center two garage doors, and install roller collars for the bay doors from ASAP Door. The cord reel is, connects to the bottom of the door for the pressure sensor, so if anything hits it, the door, or it shuts down and it goes up. And then they came in finally and put the new rubber gaskets around, and the door, the two doors are shifted over. Now that we actually got every, the new seals on there, they need to adjust the doors.
And that's making a big difference.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we're starting to see, we're not seeing the drafts, especially with this weekend. I, I didn't feel any drafts being out there.
So moved.
Second.
Astral?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Next is request appropriations for, two of my members go through fire safety inspector class through Wayne County Regional Fire Training Facility. The firefighter Anthony McCarrick and Josh Bluno at a cost of $895 per member at a total cost of $1,790. That covers the tuition and the books for the fire inspector class. They will be able to assist Assistant Chief Kerbasi and Tom Kohler in doing building inspections. And I already talked to them about starting some other fire prevention programs of measuring out long driveways in the area and starting to build pre-plans for fire response to our commercial buildings.
So certification association?
Yeah, this is a state certification class. This is, uh, this is one of, I think there's a total of five state certifications that they'll have to renew every three years when they do their fire card and their medical license, or their medical certification.
Just out of curiosity, with these two, Anthony and Josh, how long have they been on the department?
Anthony has been since an explorer, so since he was 14, and he's.
Committed.
Yeah, he's committed. Josh Bluno is, has been on for just over a year and a half, I believe. He is also on Valley City Fire Department as well. He has definitely showed initiative on our department by picking up shifts when we have call-offs or an open shifts available, so.
Okay.
He's not planning on going anywhere or anything like that. Same with Anthony. They're both only, I don't wanna say only EMTs, but they're EMTs, so they're not eligible to be looked at a full-time fire department yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Astral?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
I've given you guys the annual report for the fire department. I also put some up there for the public. A couple highlights in there. This was our busiest year with 790 calls, 90 over last year, and then 82 over our busiest year, which was 2019. We set a record in training hours for the year of 2,229 total training hours. The most auto extrication training we've ever done, the most live fire training we've ever done, also the most emergency vehicle driving we've ever done. Also on there, you can see our grants and donations, which we had a very great year of donations and grants to the association and the fire departments. And there's some response times and call volume by hours, our hour of the day, and then some of the community outreach that the fire department and the association's done. But we will get it up as, Jack, as we talk, we'll get it uploaded on the website. This will also go on social media, and if anybody would like a copy, please email. We do have a digital copy that I can get out to you.
This is fantastic.
Thank you.
You did a really nice job.
It wasn't all me. It was definitely Jen helped too, but we spent some time getting it organized and pictures and everything else done up.
And there's some extras of the period.
Yes, there's plenty of extra there if anybody wants it.
Perfect.
The last is, we have a blood drive this Saturday. I spoke to my wife this morning. There's two spots opened up. It'll be at the old fire station here. And then February 12, let me just double check that, is our next blood drive? Yes, February 12. It's, I believe it's 10 to 3 in the old, the old fire station base. They fill up fast.
I'm signing up.
The Red Cross, if you go to the Red Cross Blood Drive, I don't remember the way. I think it's just, if you go to the Red Cross and blood drives in the area, if you can find Hinkley, they book up very fast. We typically don't even advertise because they book up so fast. So, yep.
I believe on your Facebook page also, for the Fire Association, where you have promoted in the past, the link still works there.
I'm sure it does.
If you go back and find one of the past.
I'll try and get an updated link, especially for February, but like I said, Saturday is almost, is pretty much booked up. But we have found out that we have been one of the top in Medina County through the pandemic, and the woman that organizes it through my wife and the fire department is apparently putting us in for a ward because of the amount of donations and consistency we've been doing through these, through these blood drives.
It's been fantastic.
That's all I have. Thank you guys very much.
Very good. Did you have a, do you need to go as well?
No, I'm good. I have nothing going on.
Service Superintendent Hari?
How's everybody doing tonight?
How's your weekend?
You look a little tired, Mike.
Little bit.
Yeah, thank you for all you've done. I just have had an overwhelming number of people who've come forward and said, what a fantastic job you guys did over this storm. So thank you.
Very good. First thing I have on my agenda here is motion to release the retainage to Perk Company for completion of the bills for a paving project.
So moved.
Second. In the amount of, Jack, you have the motion I sent you. Eight thousand eight hundred and... Eight eight eight?
It does not have an amount on it.
I'm not sure I see it in my.
Who's got the bills? Jack, you got the bills there?
I've got them.
Yes.
No, Jack's got the bills in the purple envelope.
The purple folder's where the bills are.
Last one?
The light colored. Here, hand it on over, and we'll move on to the other one, and then we'll.
Martha will find them.
Yeah.
There's the bill, there's a way. Okay.
Move on to the next.
Do you want to jump to the next one, Mike?
Yeah. The next one I have is request for appropriations and approve emergency repair to the collector unit on the bucket truck through Tarex Utilities at a cost not to exceed $5,000.
This was the previous one, correct? Okay, so moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Swedick, seconded by Astral.
Astral?
Yes.
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Do we really have to do roll calls?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
All right. So, just an FYI on this one. $8,478.80. And just so everybody.
Would you read that one more time? Thank you.
Just for the discussion portion of that, as Mike can attest, we had some difficulty getting Perk to send us a bill. And they had not completed the project and had not installed the monuments in the road as of December. And so therefore, the project was not considered complete, so we weren't going to pay any retainage. And then they, if you recall, I think it was December 7, the board at that time made a motion to approve a change order, which deducted the $2,000 monument fee off of that bill. And then we did pay them that amount. And so the other, last week, I got a request from Perk regarding the retainage. And I did talk to Dan Becker about it, and it was kind of an agreement that, you know, they did take it off the bill, even though they didn't complete the job in the, in the period that they were supposed to, that everything else was satisfactory, and that it was recommended to release the retainage to them. And this retainage number was quite a bit less than the original retainage number on the original invoice, too. So that, thus the request, I think it's fair to wrap things up with them and keep it in mind, some of the problems that we had.
Just for the record, too, it was, it was an extended issue trying to get a hold of them, correct? And they were non-responsive?
Yeah, they had a lot of change in the company, so we're not quite sure the whys or the whats, but.
We tried multiple times to get a hold of them, and nobody calls you back. Nobody calls you back. I mean, it's not much more you can do, so.
Yeah, we tried for, I mean, it was over a month, and then, I was going to get guidance from the prosecutor's office on it, and I made one last shot to send an email to the accounts receivable woman that I had emailed with, I don't know, probably in October. And I said, please call me. Here's my cell number. And she did. She called me right back. She put me on the phone with the project manager.
So you did, or you're doing the rest of the work in-house?
We're going to.
You're going to?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, thus the request for the motion to, to pay the balance, the retainage. So Jack, did you make that motion?
I did.
Okay, and the second?
I second.
Monique? Okay, Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Bahari, do you have any place that you need to be? I'm assuming that you want to go home and sleep after the.
It'd be much appreciated.
Have you had enough of us for, for the week?
Does anyone else have questions for our service superintendent, Mr. Pearl?
What are monuments?
The monuments?
It's the boxes for the survey markers in the road for all the survey crews. So there'll be like a stake in the road, and then there's a magnet box that goes over that survey mark for late, you know, so they can come out and survey it if need be, so.
It's like a little metal box with a cover on it, that handhold that can open up to.
Mr. Pearl, I would have had the same question. Martha explained it to me today, because I was not about to pretend that I knew what a monument was. I mean, I thought it was something, a big statue.
Thank you, Mr. Bahari. Appreciate it. And thank you again for all of your work.
Thank you.
Leading the roads. We did have a question from the audience before we started that I'm gonna ask really quick to the board. Heather's here from the Rocky River Watershed, and they are looking for a person that, from Hinkley Township to serve as their contact. It was Trustee Burns, and so I wanted to see if either one of you had any interest in pursuing that. They're very good about emailing all of us collectively, if they're doing site visits or checking the waters and inviting us to be a part of it, but Mr. Burns was their primary contact.
I'll take it if no one wants it.
Okay, Trustee Swedick is your new contact. All right. Moving on to zoning, I just have one quick thing for zoning, and that is that Drug Mart came back with a revised concept plan, and their drive-through can now accommodate six vehicles, which is, meets our zoning resolution, so they will not be applying for a variance. We're kind of in a holding pattern with them because they have not submitted anything to our zoning, or to our zoning department here in Hinkley Township, so we're waiting to hear on that, but that's where that stands right now. Do we have anything for cemeteries?
No.
No, okay. Trustee Astral?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the annual backup, One Terabyte Managed Backup Solutions from 1/122 through 12/3122 through Lighthouse Solutions Group, LLC, at a cost of $1,920. This includes the cloud and local data storage and management.
And this covers both the administration and the fire department? Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
That's, I think, the way we set it up.
That would be Suzanne's question.
I think I set it up that way in 2017.
It looks about the same amount of money.
Second.
All right, Astral?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
We're gonna verify that, Monique, and then if it's different, then.
You can amend that.
Yeah, you can amend it.
So I'll check with Suzanne tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. At this time, I would make a request to move into executive session to consider discipline of zoning personnel.
Do you want to do it now or at the end of the meeting?
You want to do it at the end?
It's up to you.
And, okay, okay, we can move it to the end?
Perfect.
And.
Need your second, yeah.
Thank you. Motion to approve the Medina.
Hold on one second. We're gonna do a quick roll call.
Well, who is the second?
I was the second.
You were, okay. Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes. And a motion to approve the Medina County EMA 2022 Countywide Emergency Management Allocation at a cost of $3,123.71.
Second.
Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes. And I just wanted to also put out a reminder, just so those in attendance know, that Campbell is going to be on a one-day delay this week because of the snowstorm. They did not get their trucks out. So I will post something on the Hinkley pages, well, Hinkley pages, to let people know. I believe they said that they did make a phone call yesterday to let everybody know, so I'm not sure if anybody got that. And Suzanne is also putting it on the website.
Perfect. Very good. Thank you. I think it's probably better that they waited than to have.
Right, that would have been a mess.
A mess that could have come from that, so that's great. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, Trustee Swedick?
First, I make a motion to add the service department to my liaisonships. It was evidently left out.
It was.
Second.
All right, seconded by Astral.
All right. Monique?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Then I would like to talk about setting the meeting schedule for reinstituting the trustee work sessions. I'd like to suggest second and fourth Tuesdays at 10 o'clock.
I have an ongoing 10 o'clock meeting on Tuesdays. I could probably be here like 11:15.
About 11:30, doesn't that work?
Works for me right now. I don't have any issues with that. It's gonna be the second and third, we said.
Second and fourth.
I'm sorry, second and fourth.
So rotating the weeks that we don't have meetings.
Correct.
We'll have work sessions.
Tuesday at 11:30.
And you guys are gonna leave that, if there's a fifth Tuesday, we're gonna leave it free, correct?
It's a bi-week.
Okay, I'm all for bi-weeks.
We need a bi-week.
I did have a question from Chief Grossenbach about that. If he, if there's nothing that he has on the schedule for fire, does he have to be in attendance?
No.
Okay.
But that's very rare. Did you have a question, Mr. Pearl?
Quick one. Will the work sessions be?
Public.
Yes, we will zoom them.
Okay.
So if you, obviously, same applies. If you're zooming in, you won't be able to participate, but you're always welcome to email us or call us.
You're gonna see him noted as a special meeting work session for the purpose of a work session.
Purpose of a work session.
At least by scheduling these, and you all know that they're regular meetings.
I think that's was the.
And if for some reason we decide not to hold it, if none of us has anything, we'll just cancel it.
It changes.
Depends on which prosecutor you're talking to. Okay, and you had Mr. Gibson's property?
I also had one about the trustee Augustine that sent me some information about the sign for the Gibson property. And after looking at it, I will take that on and pursue that to see what we can do to get that done. I see there's a cutoff in May to apply for the money that former trustee Burns had told us about, so.
Perfect.
I will take that on, okay?
Okay, I'm, I've got the information on the CAUV, and I've been working with an auditor on that property. Is that something you want to take on to as the parks liaison?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I will forward you that information.
Thank you.
Very well.
Because I got the text bill on it today.
I've got.
I was gonna bring that up.
I've got the paperwork. I will give it to you, because I just signed it today, and I will forward you the email. Erica has been fantastic.
Are you working with Erica?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
It was only $83.72. So I'm assuming I'm just going to pay this.
When is it due?
February 11.
Thanks, Chief. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'll wait and see. I'll wait and see. I don't, as long as I know by the next meeting, we're fine.
Okay. Anything else, Trustee Swedick?
No, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the organizational meeting minutes on 1/11 to reflect a 3% raise for Fire Chief Grossenbach. He was the only one on 1/11 to reflect a 3% raise for Fire Chief Grossenbach. He was the only one who did not receive a raise of our department heads.
I felt bad that we missed that.
Speculated by Astral. Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And he just left and he missed it.
We can text him. He's dedicated, that's for sure. At this time, I would, I've got a letter here from the planning commission. I think you all were on that email as well from Denise Testa. She has asked that we reappoint Quinton Tiff and Martha Cathcart Wood to the Medina County Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council, or the CRA. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to do that, to reappoint Quinton Tiff and Martha Cathcart Wood to the Medina County Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2024.
Second.
Second advised. Sweattick?
Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Thank you for that. They're, they're both in agreement to continue on. So that's always a good sign.
I was, yes.
I just did not
I saw that, yeah. We didn't want to push her into something she's not ready to do.
We have the first comprehensive plan steering committee meeting on the 25th of January at 6:30 PM right here. Initially talked about holding it at the church so that we'd have more space available and allow for social distancing, but we realized that we don't have the virtual option there and we didn't want to take that away from the citizens of Hinckley who have become accustomed to it. So it will be here. We will be scheduling a special meeting for that. And we are encouraging all citizens to come in and have a say. If you cannot attend, please send me an email of things that are important to you in Hinckley Township and we will certainly have the committee address that. So that first meeting again is January 25 at 6:30 PM here at Hinckley Town Hall. Do you have any questions on that?
Because there are going to be an end time since there's going to be so many community members who are volunteering. It's just going to
No end time.
Okay.
This is our first one and what Arthur at OHM had recommended was that we just opened up to the public and say, come on in, tell us, tell us what's bothering you, tell us what you love. And just, it's a listening session.
Okay.
And then we will start. We've got Jen on board. She will proctor and she will also serve as the secretary. So then she will culminate minutes that will help us determine what are the most important things so that when we put our surveys out, we are listening to the public in those surveys from their questions and concerns on the first meeting.
Okay. Very good. Do we know how, like how long that first one went, like in 2015?
Well, so is this with Arthur or is this so?
Not with Arthur.
Yeah. This, this isn't one of the three with Arthur that we're paying for.
Right.
This is an open meeting.
Oh, okay.
An open
Thank you. I did not understand that. Okay.
Now, the first meeting with Arthur will be in February and my hope is to organize the next three minute meetings with Arthur on the night of the 25th with that committee.
Okay.
So that you guys, your schedules will be involved with that as well. And as I said to you in the email, you're more than welcome to attend. I hope that you can. But we will probably try to limit. We're not just going to let people talk for 15 minutes. There are going to have probably a threshold. I just don't know what that is yet.
Okay.
So this one being here, are you going to zoom this one?
Correct.
That's okay.
Yes, we will. We had talked at the last
Pearl has a question.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Pearl.
It's okay. Will the, the steering committee members be part of the public at that meeting?
They will not. They will have an opportunity to speak freely, but the public, our, our main priority in that committee meeting is just to listen to what the public have. We will digest it with Arthur at OHM and to have further conversation about navigating and creating the surveys based on what the public has told us.
So we moved on to a survey already?
Well, that's just my inkling based on talking to him. We can do it any way the committee determines. But that is just, we just need to find a way to mastermind getting it to all the public so that everyone has a say in some capacity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We talked at the last meeting about the public information meeting with regard to the fiscal standings of the township. Martha had offered to put that on like last year and we wanted to wait for the comprehensive plan steering committee to be organized before we did that so we could invite them in. Martha, you had given me a date tentatively of the 27th.
Mm-hmm.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Yeah. What time are you thinking?
6:30.
6:30 seems to be our staple time.
So how are you going to get that out to people?
Um
Because it's next week.
Yeah. I'm thinking, to be honest, that I might, if it's okay with the trustees, to send out, put it on the website. We'll say it here. It'll be on, I'm sure, social media. We can spread it that way. But I think too, I was thinking about doing a quick blast to our e-newsletter group, giving them the information about the comprehensive plan steering committee meeting as well as Martha's meeting since they're the same week, Tuesday and Thursday.
You want to put it on the marquee out front too?
We can do that.
Do you think it's too soon to have it the 27th? Give it like another week so people can?
Your call. It's up to, it's completely up to my
I, I don't know. I don't know if that would make a difference or not. What is
Yeah, I'm out of town the next, I'm out of town from the 4th until the 9th. So I know that I'm, I'm fine doing it in February too. But Melissa, I think you had a concern about the other steering committee meetings starting up too.
Yeah. And I, to be honest with you, we moved our, we kept ours kind of right where we wanted it to be this first meeting. I think based on when the committee can meet, and that's navigating 15 to 18 different schedules, that that last week of the month is probably going to suit us best. So if you wanted to hold it when you came back, I would have no problem with that at all.
That, that, it's fine. It doesn't really, it doesn't matter to me.
It might be too much to have, ask them to come in on Tuesday and Thursday next week.
It could be, I don't have my calendar, but I'm thinking the
Well, the 10th is when you come, that's too soon after you come back.
Yeah, I don't even know if I'll be back. I don't even know if I'll be back.
Maybe you just may not.
No, I just may not come back. It all depends, Mr. Pearl.
Jack didn't laugh. Jack didn't find that funny.
No, the, the, what is it?
Why don't you look at your calendar?
10th or the 17th are Wednesdays.
We can do it on the off Tuesday. We could, no, 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 we can't. We're going to meet in that day. That, that, yeah, the 17th that week. Let me, can I look at your calendar?
Yeah, it's just tiny.
Do we just want to schedule it during the work session next week? We could do that, couldn't we?
Let's see. Well, let's get it out there right now and figure it out. And so it looks like the 17th. 17th is a great day.
Okay, February 17th if Martha comes back.
If I come back.
February 17th at 6:30.
And what I would ask folks to do, if they have specific financial questions that they want to address, feel free to, to send them on just so we're prepared and can have the proper reports and, and go from there.
Very good.
Thank you for volunteering to do it because I think it's very beneficial.
Happy to do so.
It is very beneficial. Very good. Thank you. I'm glad we got that on the books. All right. And just for the public's notification, oaths of office for David Manley and William Spellman were administered on January 6 as well as David Zelesnick and Bill Schaefer on January 12. We did not appoint one zoning commission alternate position, one board of zoning appeals member, or one board of zoning appeals alternate position. So I was wondering if we could open up those positions on the 24th and have applications come in until February 4. Do you guys have calendars in front of you?
I don't. I will have it next time we have a meeting. The 24th till February 4.
Yes. And I know sometimes it probably looks rude that I'm on my phone, but I do math on here and check my calendar on here.
So I'm sorry, you said we'll open it up on the 24th?
Yeah, we, that way the post, it gives Suzanne time to put the posting up on the website. That gives two weeks' time for people who are interested to send in resumes or letters of interest, however you want to do it. And in talking to Suzanne, she said when things like this have happened in the past, what we've asked is that when they send in their letter of interest, they specifically ask to be interviewed for the board they have interest in. So for instance, if you want to be a zoning alternate, you would be very specific to that in the letter of interest. Or you could just say any zoning position. So we would leave it up to the people who
The applicant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Were interested. So does that seem like a good timeframe, the two weeks?
So you, yeah. Okay, you got them all listed.
Yes. And actually, when we, when we advertise this and speaking with the prosecutor's office, they ask that we just say for the zoning commission and the board of zoning appeals. So there's no issue with advertising because we can appoint anyone we want to as a member. We don't have to go through an advertising or an interview process at all. Okay. And I know there was some confusion on that with the last appointment. So if you are okay with these dates, I'll get them to Suzanne and we'll get everything situated.
I think two weeks is good.
Okay. And then that will give us
What was, what were the dates?
January 24th through February 4th. It's a two-week timeframe. And then that way we can potentially interview the week of February 7 while Martha's on vacation.
Thinking about coming back.
Sound good?
Sure.
Very good. I will get with Suzanne and we will get that going. Alrighty. And for the public's knowledge, we got our annual letter from Cleveland Metro Parks for the Dear Management Program. They will be running from noon to 6:00 AM the following mornings for portions of Hinckley reservations. So those, those days, they could potentially be close to the public and the days span from January 18th to March 17th. And again, that's from noon to 6:00 AM, January 18th through March 17th.
Wow. Is that how they normally do it? Just a big window?
Yeah. And it just, whenever they go into Hinckley, they go into Hinckley and shut it down.
It's generally like the really nice sunny day.
Oh, it's the perfect day. Yeah.
And they close it down.
The dog's ready to go.
Yep.
You're shut down.
Okay.
If I can back up one second. The, the two weeks would, on the previous one, would be the 7th actually. Does that matter to you?
Bear with me. I gotta get my dates in front of me again. So January 24th.
Is a Monday.
Okay. And then we go to the 4th of February. So that's
15 days.
The 24th through the 4th. Do you have it in front of you?
I do. I'm not getting, 24th to 31st is seven, to the 4th is 11 days.
It's two weeks.
You're right.
Well, because
Monday, the 7th would be two weeks.
Yes.
Gotcha.
There's a slight difference in the size of the calendars too. So we're going to work, give trustee Augustine a pass on that one.
I know. I have a bad eye.
Do you want to do it to the 7th? Because you guys have a work session on the 8th that you could potentially
It's going to be hard to interview during the day.
Oh, not to interview, but at least you could, you could decide if you're going to interview everybody or not. Who knows? I don't know.
Good point. You're cool. You guys want to go to the 7th?
Sure.
Okay. That's a lengthy period of time. That's good.
Well, at least we have an alternate on the BDA. So we are able, they're able to operate as a full board, correct? So
Well, and they, we don't need to appoint any alternates. That's an Ohio revise code. There, there don't, there doesn't need to be any alternates. Just in Hinckley Township, our past practice has been two per board. And some might say that the zoning commission only needs one alternate. It's just whatever the trustees decide. I know that last year the board had discussed reducing the number of alternates because we had sent so many, we had gone over our dollar amount with zoning last year and we had to transfer money into that line to accommodate the extra hearings and whatnot. So it's something to consider. There's nothing written in stone as far as appointments of alternates at all.
So you're going to, you guys are making a motion to advertise for zoning commission
Do we want to do that?
Positions during that period?
So moved during the period of January 24th to February 7.
All right. You got a second?
Second in by Astral.
Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Last thing on my list is our welcome letter. And this, I had Suzanne update with your information on it. It was created for the Hinckley Women's Club. They have this box, pizza box they get from Foster's and they fill it with all the different businesses in Hinckley, throw different magnets in there, gift cards, whatever they put in there. And this little welcome letter has always gone in there traditionally so that when we have a new resident come in, they know a little bit about Hinckley Township and all the businesses and things in the area. So if you are all okay with this, we will move forward and make, run the copy so that the Hinckley Women's Club can have.
I am.
Good to me.
Very good. All right.
That is all I have. Ms. Cathcart Wood?
Okay, don't.
So we got our fund status right now, which is currently at $5,921,406.30, of which $1,064,032.78 is in pooled investments and $4,857,373.52 are in primary checking. All the carryovers have been sent to the auditor's office and I'm expecting the amended certificate to arrive in time to hopefully present the permanent appropriations to the board for approval on February 1. I'll, I'll make sure that all the department heads and the trustees have it beforehand so that they can look at it. But that's all dependent on when I'm going to get my amended certificate on that. Just, just two things that I didn't add to the agenda. One is that the biannual audit has been complete. It should be on the auditor's website in probably a couple of weeks, but the trustees have each received a copy. And all in all, I'm, I'm happy. And, okay, this is supposed to be
That's why you're going on vacation.
It's supposed to be funny. Like, I didn't steal any money. So that is how I consider very, very good audit. I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. But, yeah, so that was a seven month process and we came out very well, in my opinion.
Thank you.
And the other issue is that I would like the board to maybe advertise, and I'll be ready with something for the work session. But if we're going to have so many meetings, I would like to explore a recording secretary at the very least for the work sessions. And I feel that that could be done via Zoom. It could be for an individual who, who wants to work at home and watch the work sessions over Zoom. And the work session minutes do not have to be as detailed as a regular meeting. So, so there's a lot of latitude there.
With that said, do we want to ask Jen to do it since she's proctoring?
No, I've had Jen and I have worked on that and I think she's got a lot on her plate, especially with the comprehensive plan steering committee. So I'd like to look outside
Okay.
For that.
Do we want to run that position in conjunction or as the same position as an assistant to Suzanne?
That's why I was just wondering, do we want to just kind of kill two birds with one stone?
Be smart.
Because we don't have, we don't have anything posted yet for that, correct?
No. And trustee Burns had a kind of a job description for that position. And I don't know how accurate it was. I think in talking to the woman who was in that position previously, she felt very much it was Kimball garbage was what she was dealing with. And filing and just helping Suzanne go through records and things of that nature. So I could see that this might be a good fit for that person.
Well, I can certainly wait until you guys get that in order.
Well, if we run it to coincide with the zoning positions, that will give us a few days to put that position together. Just throwing food out for someone out there.
I like that idea.
Yeah. Suzanne used to always keep the organizational minutes, I mean, the work session minutes prior to that. But I think that's a lot to put on her.
Suzanne doesn't want any more of them.
Yeah.
No, those were very long meetings.
No, I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to post administrative assistant, what is that called? Administrative assistant, assistant? What is Suzanne's assistant?
I think it's the administrative assistant. But you guys already have that. You have it in the organizational meeting.
Well, we're going to make a motion to post it the same dates that we are posting the zoning, which was
1/24.
1/24 through 2/7. And that position, we will work on the verbiage for that to include recording secretary.
And at this time, you're not going to determine the number of hours, correct? You're going to kind of
Correct.
See how the budget is on that?
Wing it.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Sweattick?
Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Very good. Anything else, Martha?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, really quick, I'm gonna make a motion to pay the bills in a total of $139,969.56.
Second.
Second by both of them.
Okay. Arm wrestle. Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. All right, do you want to open it to the floor before we go into executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the public? Comments? Okay. I'm gonna have you hit that button. There you go. Is it green?
Yes.
Very good.
Nikki Long, 1941 Parker. I just have three issues, just real quick. One is, you know, I, I'm sure it's shocking to all of you that I am on the website frequently, the township's website, but what I've noticed recently is that when I go to the website from my phone, all I can really see is the first page. And if I try to, you know, click on anything where I interact or look for contact information or, if you know what I'm saying, where you move your, you know, little mouse and then you get the dropdown. Those don't work on a mobile phone. So I, I would suggest that, you know, the website be updated just to be more mobile friendly. Especially with the comprehensive plan audit, you know, you want the public to know about it and to, you know, be more engaged. I, I do think that most people use their phone and not their laptops or computers, you know, when they're waiting in line somewhere or whatever. I just think it would behoove the township to make it more accessible from a mobile phone.
I completely agree with you and I've been in contact with several companies that do websites.
Okay.
And I, it's my opinion that the website needs a complete overhaul. I think the things that we are going to the website for the most are deep, are a deep dive and I think that it could be more efficient and it oftentimes to me feels very convoluted.
It's also not ADA compliant, which you may want to do nowadays as well.
Yeah.
So you accomplish both mobile and ADA compliant.
Okay.
If anybody with a disability tries to log in, you can look at a lot of websites now, it'll say ADA compliant. It is not the way it's currently set up. So you probably get both accomplished at the same time.
I actually have meetings next week about the website.
Okay, okay. But that, I just think if it was more mobile friendly, you'd have a lot more interaction with the public. They'd be able to come to meetings, you know, find information. The second issue, you know, and I know I've sent an email about it, is that the trustee meetings, you know, are not recorded. And I, I think that, that that is something that I feel should start to happen. You know, I know that they don't have to be, but I think that they should be so that the public can go back and review the meetings. I understand they can review the meeting minutes, but usually there's a lag in those where the video could be, you know, accessible the same day or the next day. And I think it is important to, for the public to be able to see the entire meeting the same way that they would be able to see a BCA meeting or a zoning commission meeting. Now, I know that they, that if you request through the township, you just get the audio, you know, and not the video. And that, that's fine. I guess I just think that whatever recording method, you know, the zoning commission, the BCA have, it should be the same for the trustees. And frankly, you know, I, I think that once, you know, you sort of open your mind to thinking that's a good idea, you know, it would be something like where Martha's presentation. If someone can't make it that day, if it's recorded, someone can go to the website at any point in time and learn about how the township runs and, you know, the allocation of funds, et cetera. I mean, I think it's just, it's only a good thing for the township to be recording its meetings and putting up somewhere where the public can, can see them. So that
It's something we'll definitely discuss. The only, there's a couple of factors that could come into play that I think might have an effect on that. One is the cost factor. The other is records keeping and complying with the sunshine laws as far as that goes. So, you know, those are huge factors to consider, but if we can overcome those hurdles, I would, I wouldn't object to it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have any information about what the cost is, you know, to do that. And I don't, I don't know the retention schedule either, so I, I don't, those are two things, you know, I can't speak to, but
Are we, are we recording the zoning and the BCA?
Yes, and that was in your email, the response that I did to you. The reason that those are recorded is for transcription purposes or only. They have always been recorded by a little recorder on the desk because it's a five-member board versus a three-member board, so it's much harder for the secretary to track everyone who's talking. And so they've always been recorded and that's the reason why. The, the minutes are the record of the meeting. We have a resident who's on right now who records them and puts them on YouTube and we don't have to worry about the record of them, which is a benefit to the township. I think it's a terrific addition to, to the township. And we, as I said to you in the email response, you have the option, I think your husband's doing it right now,
Right.
of recording the meeting yourself from your computer.
You're, you're right. You're absolutely right. I, you know, it is, it's great that the citizens have the option of doing it, but you know, I do feel that the township should take responsibility and do it. Because, you know, I know, you know, Ms. Rushworth has done it for a long time, but it doesn't mean that she's gonna continue to do it in the future. And quite frankly, it puts a, a big burden on her to record every meeting and to make sure that she's uploading it to YouTube. I, I, and I'm sure she's happy to do it. I just think that the township should take some responsibility in doing it as well. And, you know, I, you know, like I said, I don't know what the cost would be to maintain these records. I know, you know, I'm just a YouTube amateur. It seems to me like you can, you know, post a decent amount of information for free if you had your own channel.
Can I, this is a there, if you're just talking about an audio tape, I would actually support that. But it would have to be within our record retention. So for example, we have a schedule and I can't remember. You're, you're welcome to it if you'd like to see it. I can't remember if I've sent it to you before or not, but we have a, a schedule that outlines, it's been approved by the state Historical Society as to how long we have to maintain things. So we maintain the zoning, even though they're for transcription purposes. We maintain those for at least a year on there. And I guess my question would be, what do you feel for your purposes or, you know, the public's purpose would be a reasonable retention period that? Because the one thing we can't guarantee is that we should be or can, because then it does become a storage issue, that we can hold on to these tapes in perpetuity.
Sure.
So what would be a reasonable schedule? And if that can be determined, we would update or find in our current schedule something that would fit that. They are helpful to me though, from time to time, in same reason they're helpful to Judy. And, and I appreciate the YouTube and stuff because I did go back when I think Mr. Pearl asked Suzanne about whether or not the service portion was in the, the work session or meeting the other last week that, and I could go back and I could verify that no, it was not and we could, we could address that. So, you know, I've, I've kind of evolved into this, especially if the meetings are much longer and a little more. There's a lot more engagement. Then they have, do have a benefit. As far as storage goes, it's a matter of either thumb drive or, or hard CDs and we just catalog them. And if a year is reasonable, which I do think it is, for all practical purposes, then we already accommodate that within our current retention schedule. And personally, I don't feel that that's a, a big stretch. And it might be actually very helpful. Just a thought.
As far as posting it, I would think you would want to link it through the website, so we come back to the website. So I definitely support what you're asking, you know, and I, I don't think any of us would object to it. But it's, you know, getting that done, so.
Sure.
As long as you're okay with that, we'll work towards it, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if it's, you know, something you would consider doing or put on your, you know, agenda to do.
Before I sat here, I always wanted it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just go to YouTube.
Are you, you have, but, but to Nikki's point, we can't rely on the, the time or talents of other folks to do. Because I was like, thank goodness this is on here, because I don't remember. I mean, there was so much that I wrote it down one way and just didn't need to go back and verify that. So we made sure, you know, and a lot of things, be honest, you know, there's a lot of scrutiny, and, and as it should be, as we're, we represent the public. But so many times, there's nothing nefarious or intentional in so much of it. It's just that there's a lot going on and, and you think something and it's good to have some tangible
Right.
evidence that we need to go back and
Right.
do that.
I think, I think they're both good suggestions. I think trustee Augustine actually brought it up. I think it was last summer that you brought up updating the website.
I've been begging for years.
Because I remember I laughed out loud when trustee Karen said, what's wrong with the website? You're like, it's terrible. It's, so I, I totally support that and I like the idea that trustee Sweattick have is if we're able to record them, link them to the website. So it's driving people right back to exactly where we want to go. We're gonna spend money on updating it. So it's just kind of the insurance policy that if you want to see it, you know, you're gonna go to the website and look.
It's my opinion that, that you folks shouldn't have to hunt the web to try and find information that, that we have, that the township has. So if it's something that we're putting out, it should be on our own webpage. You shouldn't have to go and find it somewhere else.
And that's why Ms. Rushworth started it, because she had asked us to record the meetings in some capacity and the board wasn't in agreement on it. So I, I know she's on and I thank you, Lisa, because you have done a really great job of tracking all of these meetings and I know I use them as a resource. So I'm not opposed to it at all. I just would like to see that website updated to support it.
Would, um, so would, would you guys discuss like how long something? Because we did this with the minutes too. For a while there, we had minutes going back to the Stone Age. And, you know, that became very cumbersome for people to find things. We, we maintain them permanently in the office, of course, but with, you know, the other thing is kind of to figure out how long an audio or a filmed or zoomed meeting would be available on the website and then you put a disclaimer there and say that either it's been destroyed in accordance with our record retention policy and the written minutes are available or something. So it's important to figure out those parameters. So it serves the public, but it also serves the interest of the township.
And would the, has the Historical Society ever expressed interest in just keeping or having those records after they've been?
No, you know, it's, it's only very rare things that would have some significant historical value to them. They, the recommendation of really them and our legal advisors and, and any class you would take is that you, you don't want to retain things beyond the period of their usefulness. And, and, and there's storage and then there's also employees' time. Because if you have a records request for something, you know, everything that has the letter A in it, you could be going back way, way back and, and taking up a lot of valuable staff time in those things and really not gaining any relevant information.
And I think you would agree, a year is more than sufficient for somebody to go back and, and look at something that happened.
Yeah.
And obviously they could screen capture it if they wanted to, you know?
Right, right.
I, I don't even think a year is necessary. I mean, if I want to know what's going on, I'm not going to watch news from six months ago. I want to watch news that's relatively
Yeah, but I think to Martha's point, it's something that we could do easily and manage.
Yeah, and there's, there's standardized retention periods. We don't just make them up. We, we have to be in accordance with a prescription that, that supports our, our schedule. And you're, you're welcome to that. I think it's, is it on the web?
It is.
I think it is. Yeah, I think our latest one is on there because we wanted to make sure people understood what's available.
That's the problem.
Well, I can't find it on my phone, but. So the last thing I just, I, I wanted to bring up, you know, and I know it was alluded to earlier, was the, the zoning commission appointment of Mr. Spellman from the, the prior board. And, you know, I'm, here's the, the series of events, the way that I, you know, that, that I could see them. And, you know, I'm, I'm bringing this up because I just would like some clarification. I don't, I don't really understand how, you know, how, I, I mean, I, I understand that his appointment happened, but I, it, it seems a little strange, the way that it happened. So, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but I, you know, I know there was a, a posting for the, for an alternate zoning commission member. And then at some point, that the period for the posting was extended to December 14th. And, you know, I could see that the website was updated with the extension of the application date to December 14th. And I can see that the, the verbiage changed from alternate zoning commission to just zoning commission position, but the, the PDF that accompanied the posting was not changed. So it's still read that the posting was for an alternate commission member and that the deadline was December 3rd. I know personally, because I interviewed for that, that I, I was not told during the interview that, that a zoning commission position had opened, so I was under the impression that I was interviewing for an alternate position. And then, you know, and I, I say that because then, you know, it wasn't until December 31st that I even knew that a zoning commission position had been filled, right? Because I'm waiting for the alternate position to be filled, but then I find out December 21st that the, the actual regular position had been filled. And, you know, and then on top of all that, there's nothing at all on social media about the position, which I thought was unusual because, you know, there are a couple of different, a couple of different Facebook pages. And, you know, look, I don't, I don't like Facebook, but it is a way to communicate with at least some residents. I would think that it would have been put on there. Well, actually it was put on there. Monique put it on there. So I, I, you know, I guess I, I'm confused. I, I understand that the board can appoint whoever they want and you don't have to post for a position and you don't have to interview anyone. But it seems to me like from the series of events I just outlined, it seems that, you know, the, the former board knew who they wanted and that's fine. That's fine. They knew who they wanted and they, you know, just sort of put, filled that position with who they wanted. And again, that is fine. But what I don't like about it is that, you know, there's a posting for an alternate and then that sort of changes and no one really says anything about it. And then no one says anything during the interviews and then you don't find out until the next meeting. I, to me, that just seems, it just seems, um, I don't know. It, it just doesn't seem right.
Okay, so can I, if I can interject, I'll give you some backstory so that you can understand. Because I understand that perception is one thing and truth is another and I'm going to speak to the truth of it. We lost a zoning commission member. With something like that, we are extremely sensitive to the With something like that, we are extremely sensitive to the family. We had a zoning position available for an alternate that was posted on the website, and instead of creating another posting, we decided formally in a trustee meeting that we would extend it, and the minutes reflect that, that it would be for the zoning commission positions, and it's right in the December 7th, 2021 meeting minutes. Reason being is because we just found out that that gentleman had passed away, and he had been almost a family member to some of the people on that board, and we want to respect his family as well. In losing trustee Schulte last year, I can speak firsthand to how important keeping someone's privacy is. We kept the fact that he was ill quiet for a very long time out of respect for him and his family. And so we were giving the same respect to Mr. Schneider. And we did follow the rules and regulations, because to your point, when you went on the website before you would even click on the PDF, it stated, and I have a screenshot, and I know that you've gotten it from Suzanne.
Yeah.
That the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees extended the application for the zoning commission positions, plural. It didn't change the actual PDF with the actual advertisement. But we didn't even have to do that, because Ohio revise code says we can appoint anyone we want at any time. Now, we didn't have it in our head that we were for sure going to appoint anyone that during interviews, but we thought we would at least open the door to potentially having one of these interviewers be our new zoning commission member. And it wasn't even something we discussed, we just all similarly thought it. Social media posting for interviews or positions, I've never done it, and I'm not going to start, to be honest, because I've already worked 43 hours every week for the last two weeks in Hinkley Township, and this is supposed to be a part-time job. The Hinkley Facebook pages are not official pages. If you want something official from Hinkley Township, it's on the website. That's our official place to go. I have never posted a job application for the service department, I've never posted a job application for the administration offices, and why would I do it for this specific position? When we had the interview set up, we only had two people interested. When we extended it, we got four more. They all came in, they all interviewed, and the reason you weren't told is because we were just keeping our minds open. We didn't have an idea as to what we were going to do, but we knew it was important to make that board whole, just like it was important for us the, that January when we had lost trustee Schulte. A full board is your most effective and efficient board, and we saw that here with our organizational meeting. That's always been my goal, is to make a full board, to make the best decisions, because every single person has a different quality that they bring to that board. When Bill Spellman came in, it was a no-brainer. He had served on the zoning commission for 11 years, he had been a chair, he had been a co-chair. I was shocked to see him, actually didn't recognize him when he came in. Martha had recognized him, he had a mask and a hat on, so I didn't know who he was. And I hadn't seen him since I was a trustee in 2017. But he was most suited, in our opinion, for that position because of the tenure that he brought to a very, very, very young board. And his expertise, you know, we had said to him in the interview, you know, have you been listening to zoning commission meetings? And he knew exactly what was going on. And a lot of the things that we were talking about right now are things that they talked about when he was in that position. So he brought something to the table that we thought was unique and a perspective that we thought was unique, because Bruce brought a really unique perspective. And no, we can never replace Bruce 100%, but it was the most logical thing to put Bill Spellman in, and that's what we did. And we didn't have to advertise, and we didn't have to interview, we could have pointed anybody we wanted. But we were trying to do the right thing, and so that's how that process went.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, you know, you don't have to do it, but you do it anyways. And I think it's important to do it, because it, it, you know, the more people that apply for these positions, it can only serve the township. I mean, if, if you have to pick from five people, it's much better to be able to pick from 10, or 15, or 20, you know, I mean, it's just, it's going to expand, you know, the possibilities, the township is going to be in a better position, you know, by just casting a wide net. And so I, I'm happy that you post for these positions, I appreciate it. I, I think that it's, you know, in, in furtherance of casting a wide net, I think it's a good idea to post it on Facebook. I understand if, you know, you won't do it. I, I will do my best to do it just for the sake of the township. But I will say that, you know, I can understand the sensitivities. I would have appreciated just a small blurb at the beginning that said, hey, just so you know, you know, there's a sensitive situation, we can't go into it, but, you know, we are sort of looking at two different positions, possibly.
I'm not going to speak to what happens in executive session.
And I'm not asking you to, I am just telling you what I would have preferred would have just been to know that, and that way, when, you know, when I hear what happens on December 21st, I'm not surprised. And, and again, you, you have your ability to do what is outlined to you in the Ohio revise code, and I'm not challenging it. I'm just saying that I think it would have gone over better and would have been a little bit more transparent if you just, if the three of you or one of you would have just said, hey, just look, you know, I'm not going to go into it, but we are looking at, you know, filling two potential positions, that's all.
That's why we made it plural, positions.
Okay, well, it would have, I, I mean, yeah, but I already had applied, so I didn't go back to the posting on the website. So it would have been nice to hear it in the interview, but thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anything else, or anybody else who has anything to say, or questions, concerns? Okay. We'll move into executive session at 7:47.
And are all my bills signed?
No, ma'am.
Okay, nobody's going anywhere.
We could take them off. There aren't any new ones. I sign them later. I don't know, it's a purple folder.
Check that little purple folder, Monique, there might be nine, nine that I did this afternoon, real quick ones.
We can't take them short, we're ready.
No, you know, and my crazy thing is.
It would look very different.
Because, so we've been really lucky, because at the beginning of the year, the meeting falls on the same day as payroll. But as soon as February passes, we move into March, then one week is.[1181.15]